Welcome to the Spokane City Council Meeting of April 11th Legislative Agenda. Would you join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmembers Kneer and Wilkerson are absent.
All right, and before we get to Boards and Commissions, we have several proclamations, and then we're going to get a report from the West Hills neighborhood. So we'll start with Giving Joy Day, Councilmember Cathcart and Dr. David May from Eastern Washington University.
Dr. Davis, who's accepting?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Dr. May.
Dr. May, sorry, Dr. May. City of Spokane proclamation, whereas for 140 years, the institution of higher education, first known as Benjamin P. Cheney Academy, then the state Normal School at Cheney, then Eastern Washington College of Education in 1937, and then Eastern Washington State College, and since 1977 as Eastern Washington University, has enhanced access to higher education in the Inland Northwest and beyond by recruiting and supporting students, especially first generation and those from underserved populations. And whereas Eastern Washington University daily fulfills its mission of expanding opportunities for personal transformation through excellence in learning by delivering high-quality academic programs, high-quality co-curriculum, including social, cultural, and athletic activities designed to develop the intellectual, personal, and practical aspects of students' lives while preparing them for our region's workforce, and promoting student access by supporting student engagement and timely degree completion in a cost-effective manner. And whereas Eastern Washington University students, faculty, staff, alumni, and their families strive to advance the institution's vision to be a driving force for the culture, economy, and vitality of Washington State, graduating more than 112,000 unique, diverse, and accomplished individuals who make meaningful contributions to both their career fields and their communities, and with grit, grace, gratitude, and greatness, give joy to all. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim April 4, 2022, as Giving Joy Day. Dr. May wants to...
Here he is. Dr. May, say a few words for us, if you would.
Never going to turn down that chance, President Beggs. Thank you very much for the proclamation, and thank you also to the entire city of Spokane for being a wonderful partner with Eastern Washington University in advancing the mission we have here in the region. Giving Joy Day is a day where Eastern Washington University dedicates itself even more than usual to sharing the joy, the pride, and the spirit of Eastern Washington University. We celebrate alumni-owned businesses, we focus on helping students be successful through scholarships, and this year, that focus on scholarship raised more than 475 gifts totaling almost $339,000. That's a gift to our students that gives now and gives joy well into the future. So again, thank you very much for the proclamation, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words, and as we say it in Cheney, "Go Yigs."
All right, thanks for being here. And next, we have Autism Awareness Month, Councilmember Bingle, joined by Jill Ide.
All right. Whereas autism is the fastest-growing of all childhood disabilities, and the prevalence rate far exceeds the prevalence rates of diabetes, AIDS, childhood cancer, cystic fibrosis, cerebral palsy, muscular dystrophy, or Down Syndrome combined, and the real day-to-day challenges occur in our families, neighborhoods, schools, and communities, the causes are undetermined, current treatments are not fully accessible, and there is no cure, and whereas autism is a lifelong spectrum disorder occurring in one in every 44 individuals, one in 27 boys, which knows no racial, ethnic, or socioeconomic boundaries, and has an immense impact on essential human experiences such as the ability to show and receive affection, to imagine a way to ask for help, to make a friend, to play, speak, understand, and most importantly, to belong. And whereas for every person diagnosed with autism, hundreds are touched, and the impact of autism varies greatly from person to person, challenging our community's response to each individual living with autism, to that end, Northwest Autism Center joins hands with Spokane's Autism Society of Washington, the Isaac Foundation, and our other local community agencies, families, providers, educators, and all those touched in our communities to make a difference today. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Autism Awareness Month in Spokane, and encourage all citizens to recognize and join hands in proving the quality of life of people with autism spectrum disorders.
All right, is Jill here? Come on down. Jill, say a few words.
Hi.
And tell us who's with you.
I'm Jill Ide, I'm the Community Connections Director for Northwest Autism Center.
Excuse me, I'm Ally Speziale, the Community Connections Manager, I work right alongside Jill.
And I am Maria Jennings from the Isaac Foundation, I am the Director of Community Programs, Family Events, as well as Youth Programs.
So we want to thank you for the proclamation, and we brought a poster for you to have in your halls for the next year or so, and it represents all three organizations, and we thank you very much for the proclamation, and we ask you to join us at our Steps for Autism Walk on April 24th down at Riverfront Park if you can make it.
Thank you. All right, next, our final one for this evening's Holocaust Days of Remembrance, Councilmembers Oppone and Herschel Zellman.
Whereas the Holocaust was the state-sponsored systematic persecution and genocide of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators from 1933 to 1945, wherein 6 million Jews were murdered and millions of other non-Arians suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny, and it is acknowledged that there are important lessons to be learned from the study of the Holocaust. And whereas pursuant to an act of Congress in 1980, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the Days of Remembrance for the victims of the Holocaust to be Sunday, April 24th, through Saturday, April 30th, 2022, and Thursday, April 28th, 2022, as International Day of Remembrance, known as Yom Hashoah. And whereas the Holocaust Remembrance at this season in Spokane continues to have a strong presence, with this year being no exception, reaffirming the compassion of our community and its respect for our community's diversity. Now therefore, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of Spokane, City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim April 24th through the 30th, 2022, as the Holocaust Days of Remembrance in Spokane, in memory of all the Holocaust victims and survivors, and further proclaim that we, as citizens of the City of Spokane, should be vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny, and overcome intolerance and indifference through learning and remembrance.
Thank you for this proclamation, I'd like to accept it on behalf of our committee. I'm accompanied today by two of our committee members, Mary Noble and Judy Silverstein. Holocaust Remembrance Day will be observed by Jews around the world on April 28th. Its purpose is to honor the 6 million of our people whose lives were taken by the Nazis and their collaborators during World War II. There were about 45 million civilian deaths during that war. The 6 million were not incidental casualties. Ultimately, they were deliberately targeted because they were Jews. Ultimately, the Nazis eliminated 2/3 of the Jewish population of Europe, 1/3 of the planet's entire Jewish population. When we remember the 6 million, we do not engage in self-pity. In my opinion, the most meaningful thing we do to honor the 6 million is to teach the world about what happened, with the intention of preventing subsequent genocides. On the global stage, we've certainly come up short. On a local stage, we've made inroads by engaging our region's middle and high school students with our Holocaust-themed art and writing contests. This year's theme just happens to be "Why Holocaust Education." We have judged the art contest entries, and the winning pieces will be exhibited at the Liberty Park branch of the Spokane Public Library for the entire month of May. The writing contest deadline is coming up May 1st. Students and teachers tell us that by far, the most effective way to learn about the Holocaust is from listening to the stories of Holocaust survivors who come to their schools. These folks are now quite elderly, and sadly, we are losing more and more of them each year. Fortunately, members of our planning committee collaborated with KSPS, Spokane Public Television, to produce a 45-minute video that relates how the Holocaust unfolded and weaves in the stories of Spokane residents who survived the Holocaust, as well as the stories of residents whose relatives were survivors. Just released last week, Spokane's Voices of the Holocaust is a remarkable documentary that we anticipate will contribute profoundly to Holocaust education in our region for years to come. A 30-minute version of this video will be aired by KSPS on Thursday, April 28th at 7:30. Please consider tuning in, and thank you very much again for this proclamation.
Thank you, and thanks everyone for coming on. All right, now we're going to get a report from our West Hills Neighborhood Council, Karen Carlberg. For those of you who haven't been, we used to have quarterly town hall meetings where we would go to a community center and then hear from all the neighborhood councils from that part of the city. During COVID, we stopped doing that, and we started doing these every other week or so, having a report. And so we're continuing with that until we start up our town hall meetings. So Karen, I think we hopefully worked out the technical glitches from last time, and we're really happy that you're here to tell us what's going on in West Hills. Let's see, we can't hear you yet.
Well, I'm...
There you go.
Working on it.
Yep, we got you.
Okay. So now, does everybody have a good view?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to tell you what has been happening in West Hills since January 2021, the last year and a quarter or so since we last talked. And, let's see. Maybe I need to do that. Okay, so, West Hills did have regular meetings all last year, we didn't miss any like we did the previous year. It all has been Zoom, and we've had quite a number of presentations, some by city staff. We had one by someone from the stormwater department, learning what the major pollutants are in Spokane, and how we can reduce the amounts of those pollutants that go into our stormwater. We had a presentation on the American Rescue Plan and learned how that money is being allocated in Spokane. We had several community members giving presentations. We had someone from the Lands Council talking about toxins in the Spokane River and the education that they are doing about those. We had someone from the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife talking about moose, and especially those moose who are in our neighborhood, in urban settings, how they behave around us, and how we should behave around them, and especially how we should keep our dogs away from them. We had a local mom talking about a Garden Springs Creek monitoring project that she created as a way for families to work together and learn about what is in the creek, which is in the arboretum, which is in our neighborhood. One of our neighbors has organized a block watch on her block for about 25 years, so she told us how to get a block watch started, and what we need to do to make that work for all of us. We had a candidate forum with two candidates, there were the contested Spokane Municipal Judge position, and then we had all three candidates for the two districts, Districts 2 and 3, and our neighborhood does span both of those districts. We had another presentation from the person who created the Growing Neighbors Organization, and that is an organization that arranges food pantries for people who aren't getting enough food, and they also promote things like community gardens and building community in neighborhoods. One of our neighbors got excited about this, and he arranged a presentation for us from Second Harvest, and now he and a team of some other neighbors are working on getting food pantries in our neighborhood and increasing food availability for people in our neighborhood who need that. Now, I talked to you before about how West Hills neighbors would like to see some different development around the intersection of Sunset Boulevard and Government Way. Now it's happening. So the photo on the bottom right here was given to us by a Catholic charity speaker talking about an apartment complex for low-income people that they are going to build. So in this photo, I hope you can see my cursor, but Government Way is going here, Sunset Boulevard is here. So Catholic Charities has purchased this property here. There's a very old motel here, showing on the picture up above, that will be demolished and replaced by one apartment building. There's an office building in the middle of this property. Catholic Charities plans to move their corporate offices in there, so they will be there, and then this vacant property will be used for another apartment complex. So altogether, they're proposing about 48 apartments for low-income people, but he emphasized that the plans could change at least by a little bit. This plot of land on the west side, which is currently vacant, is going to become an apartment building with 80 apartments, developed by the Brumbach Company. And then to the west of that is the Ascenda property, which is a facility for addiction recovery, and the old building, which is there presently, is shown here. So that property was purchased by Inland Empire Foundation a couple of years ago, and we have had meetings with these people before. But Inland Empire Foundation has a new president, and so a few of us met with him a couple of weeks ago, and their plans currently are uncertain, they're working to develop new plans, but in general, they will build new units, residencies, for the people who use Ascenda. They will demolish the old buildings, and then they may or may not build some new buildings. We also have more apartments at the top of Sunset Hill, around Assembly and Russell Street. The City View Apartments already are open, they have 144 apartments. The Russell Apartments were announced just recently, this will be a building with 32 apartments, in a location that currently has an old, unused restaurant. And then there's an old Econo Lodge that has been unused, or it's been vacant, and it's being converted. According to their website, they plan to make it into 138 apartments. So we have a lot of new residences coming in around Sunset Boulevard. So when I add up the numbers that I have, I came up with 476 apartments in the West Hills neighborhood. It's an approximate number, but it's a large number. And then in the Grandview Thorpe neighborhood, which is just south of us, and south of I-90, you probably have heard from them, but the latest data that I have shows nine different housing developments that have been proposed. The total number of houses is as many as 515. So you add together these two numbers, and I came up with 991 new residences. So these are all within a very short distance of Sunset Boulevard. So that means increased traffic, of course, on Sunset Boulevard and the Leitak Creek Bridge for people who are heading toward downtown. And then, you know all about the problems with Highway 195 and the entrance from 195 to eastbound I-90, and you know that the intersection between 16th and Highway 195 is going to be closed in the next year or so. So that means that people living in West Hills and Grandview Thorpe no longer will be able to use that route to get to eastbound I-90, and so instead, they will go to Sunset Boulevard, and from there, to get to I-90 eastbound, they mostly will use the Maple Entrance, maybe the Monroe Entrance. So more traffic on those entrances, and a lot more traffic in that area of downtown, surrounding that area. So big changes in traffic flow expected from all of this. Now I think most West Hills neighbors would say that crime is our biggest complaint, our biggest problem in the neighborhood, and as long as I have lived in the neighborhood, our neighborhood police officers have told us that the Motel 6 at the top of Sunset Hill is the major source of crime. So a little more than a year ago, one of our neighbors was assaulted and robbed within a block or so of the motel, and so at our next neighborhood meeting in February 2021, we had our neighborhood police officer there, and before that, I had a conversation with Carly Courtwright, and one suggestion that she made was that one possibility is creating a chronic nuisance complaint against the motel. So the police looked at that, and they tabulated the data, and then November 5th, you all know that there was a shooting at the Motel 6, where both an ATF agent and the drug suspect were shot. And so right after that, several West Hills neighbors sent letters and emails to a variety of city officials, including our city council representatives in District 2, but also the mayor and the city administrator, all emphasizing the urgency of doing something about this. So then at our December 2021 West Hills meeting, we had our neighborhood police officer and the city administrator there, and our police officer told us that they had documented 69 calls to the Motel 6 in the previous 10 and 1/2 months, so that's about 1 and 1/2 calls per week on the average. And so using those data, they did create a chronic nuisance complaint, which they delivered to the Motel 6 owner the day before our December meeting, and a few days later, there was a reply from the attorney for the motel owner, which was shared with us, promising to take care of a long list of issues. And I have asked a couple of times about the outcome of that, and whether or not we yet have data showing whether there has been a reduction in the number of calls to the Motel 6. I don't know if enough time has passed to really know for sure, but in any case, I haven't gotten a reply yet. So we've had other crimes as well.
So Karen, we're a little bit over time, so I'm hoping you can wrap it up soon, but thanks for sharing that.
Okay, sure, I didn't know we had a time limit.
Yep.
Okay, so another place where we've had crime problems is at a water facility, a city water facility on West Drive. The biggest one was a fire started at a truck, middle of January, smoke plume coming from it, nothing else burned, it was January, and it was foggy, but boy, if it had been August and windy, it could have been awful. We've had a variety of other crimes or criminal suspicious activity occurring at that place, including prowling at an adjacent neighborhood property. So in any case, we have had conversations with the Water Services Director, and the city administrator, and our police officer, and just got an email a few days ago saying that they are working on improvements. We've had a variety of other crimes in the neighborhood, typical things that probably are happening throughout the city. Now, another thing we've done is an outreach to River Run, where historically has been not very little participation in the neighborhood, as well as the new City View Apartments. So we got a community engagement grant to provide a brochure, which we distributed to these people, we've got some more left, we're going to be doing it again. And last slide, some good news, we have new officers for 2022 to 2023, and our executive committee membership has doubled in size from five members to 10 members. All five of our previous officers agreed to continue, and then we have five new people, and that's giving us the capacity to do more. So good news there.
All right.
That's what's happening in West Hills.
Thank you, Karen. Any councilmembers have questions for Karen? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, just a comment, Karen, I just, I will, if you don't hear anything, I will check with our city administrator and SPD and see about getting you a response with regards to what's going on at the Motel 6.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Karen, for the report and for all the tireless work you've had in your neighborhood and getting them activated and more organized, and please give our regards to the rest of your neighborhood council members and residents, and we'll look forward to being back in person and visiting again. So take care, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, before we get to our legislative agenda, we have some board appointments, I believe.
Appointment of Barbara Lee and Karen Sabanakita to a three-year term on the Community Housing and Human Services Board to serve from April 18, 2022, to April 17, 2025.
All right, all those in favor of appointing them, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed name, any abstentions? All right, thanks for your service, and again, if anyone else wants to serve on a city board or commission, you can go to the Boards and Commissions webpage on the city website, and there's an application, you can see which boards and commissions are open, which ones people are term-limiting off, and what work they do. The mayor's office reviews every application, and the mayor interviews potential candidates, and she nominates people, and they come, we then interview them, and then we vote on them. So thanks for your service, everyone. All right, that brings us to the legislative agenda, and I want to thank everybody for turning out tonight. A lot of you I know and I've seen in the past, we've only been in person for a couple of weeks. of weeks, so it's good to see you back again. And there's many of you I have never met before or remember seeing, so I really appreciate you coming down to City Hall to be part of our business. I wanted to give an update on our agenda. So this afternoon at our briefing session, there was an item on the consent agenda about who to award RFP to for homeless sheltering. That was going to be based on a recommendation from the Continuum of Care Board and their RFP Committee. They have not completed that work yet, so we deferred that to next Monday. And usually, the public doesn't testify on consent agenda items, but we're going to likely pass an amendment to our rules tonight that will allow the public to do that and also move that vote from afternoon time to 6:00 PM time. So next week at 6:00 PM, there will likely be a vote on an RFP contract regarding a shelter. So that's there. The second kind of related is scheduled for tonight on short notice was going to be an interim change to our zoning ordinances that would have allowed shelters to be located in heavy industrial zones, which currently they aren't. And council wanted more information about that, and since it was short notice, they asked to defer that until next Monday as well. So again, that will be available for testimony next Monday night at 6:00 PM. But one of the council rules that we have had and will continue to have is that when we get to open forum, we don't have testimony on issues that are going to be on this, tonight's agenda, because you can testify if you want to on tonight's agenda, and for the next week's published agenda, that we don't do that. So it's going to be fine to talk at open forum about homelessness and the need for services and things like that, but we're going to ask you not to address the specifics of the RFP or the interim zoning ordinance when we get to that. And we'll come back to that. But first, we have a special budget ordinance on a different topic.
Ordinances amending ordinance number C-36161, passed by the city council December 13, 2021, and entitled. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2022, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declaring an emergency in appropriating funds in. Ordinance C-36188, Fleet Services Fund, number one, increase revenue by $264,259. A of the increased revenue, $264,259, is from inter-fund fuel sales from other city departments. Number two, increase appropriation by $264,259. A of the increased appropriation, $264,259, is provided solely for supplies and equipment related to clean fuel infrastructure reserve expenses in the Fleet Services Department. This action arises from the creation of the Clean Fuel Infrastructure Reserve Plan.
And just by way of summary, according to state law, the city and county have to transition to electric vehicles when they are cheaper, which they usually are over the lifetime of ownership, and also to mitigate climate change. But that requires electric charging infrastructure. And so the Fleet Department came up with a plan to charge a surcharge on each gallon of fuel that we currently use on our fleet, and then that's going to go into this reserve fund to pay for charging infrastructure. And we have one person signed up to testify, and I believe that's Sherri Sly. If Sherri's here. Not seeing Sherri. Okay. Any council commentary? All right. Yep. And I think the speakers go out there, so they can hear out there. Okay. So there's no council commentary, so prepare to vote. And Councilmember Stratton, who's appearing virtually, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. So that passes four to one.
Excuse me. Did I see a no vote up there?
Yep.
This is a special budget ordinance, so it requires five votes.
Oh, it doesn't, it doesn't pass tonight. You are correct. Thank you. It doesn't, requires a fifth vote, so administration will have to bring this back when some of our other council members are back.
Ordinance C, do you want me to read the next? Ordinance C-36189, General Fund, number one, delete one classified supervisory probation officer position from one to zero and decrease the associated appropriation for salary and benefits in the Community Justice Services Department. Number two, decrease the salary appropriation for two vacant Community Justice Coordinator positions by $7,500 each, or $15,000 in total in the Community Justice Services Department. Number three, add one exempt Director of Community Justice Services position from zero to one and increase the associated appropriation for salary and benefits in the Community Justice Services Department. A, there is no change to the overall appropriation level in the general fund. This action arises from the need to create a Director of Community Justice Services position.
All right. So this is essentially a reclassification to go from a lead person to a department head that's exempt, which means the mayor appoints and the council approves. It's budget neutral for this year, and there's no community commentary requested. Is there any council commentary? All right. Seeing and hearing none, prepare to vote. And Councilmember Stratton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. That does pass five to zero. All right. I think we're down to the resolution on council rules.
Resolution 2022-31, adopting various amendments to the city council's rules of procedure for 2022.
All right. So those rules have been published on our website for a while. Again, the biggest change I recall is the changing the consent agenda to 6:00 PM and allowing people to testify at that meeting. There's no public, wait, is there? There is. Sorry. Hi. We do have public testimony. Dave Bilson.
How many do we have?
I have a problem with you not letting people talk about things that are on the agenda. For instance, if you have something going on next week, how is the public supposed to find out if it's on the legislative agenda? If you don't publish it, we don't know, and we can come in here and break your rules? Many times, I've seen something come up, be deferred, deferred, deferred. If you'd have listened to us the first time, you might have got some new ideas as how to fix it. You ought to let us speak to these things. You can hear things ahead of time, instead of expecting us to have a cotton-picking crystal ball to know what the heck's going to go on. You have a very ambiguous statement about that. Future legislative actions? Oh, come on. That is so ambiguous, it's not funny. We need to change that, because people sometimes come up with good ideas early on. So you should be allowing people to speak to whatever they feel is important. That's what the Constitution allows, free speech. It's not difficult, is it? So get rid of that future legislative actions. Legally, that can mean something a year from now, and we still can't speak to it? Yes, I've seen things deferred for a year, and I couldn't speak to it. So be careful with this future legislative phrase. We have no crystal balls. I won't say what kind we have.
Thanks, Dave. Oh, so I know it's been a long time, and some of you haven't been here, but we don't have either applause or boos that, so, but, so you can smile when someone makes a joke. But I did want to just note, we changed the rules last year or so, so that it's not any future legislative action. It's only if it's on the next week's agenda. So we used to have a problem where things were deferred for three months or six months, and then you couldn't testify for three or six months on that. So we did change that. We took that to heart, that exact feedback. So just wanted to let people know that. Next, Andrea G., Dreya, I believe. There you are, Dreya.
First off, just want to thank everybody for being here, council members, and people in the community taking their time out of their day to be here. Yes, Dreya Rose, I'm the co-founder of MAC Movement. That's Music, Art, and Creativity Movement. We're out here every Monday doing a free speech with the side of free food and just encouraging people to come and speak, because that is, you know, our human right. I agree with Bilson. You know, how are we supposed to know what's going to happen next week? Just for instance, when you guys had your spring break, we were out here anyways, because we, that's our motto, is to be here every Monday, and so we can give at least free food and free speech with chalk art. But we were here, and people were showing up, not knowing that there was no city council meeting. So if people aren't already getting the information now, how are they supposed to know that that's what's going to be spoken about in the next week? So luckily, we were here, you know, the news came, they didn't know. A police officer came, and he didn't know. Several community members came, and they didn't know. And so I would just hope that you guys be considerate of the community that come out here and just, you know, think about them, the people that you serve, because we do come out here, and like today, the doors weren't even open on time, and we were out there in the wind, and it was cold, and just be considerate. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Dreya. All right. Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I think, like anything, there's always little things you don't like or love, but I think every year, at least that I've been here, we've, I think, improved our rules a little bit at a time. And as the council president mentioned, last year, you know, changing that, the issue where you couldn't testify on something that's been deferred out a while was a big one. Another that I think a lot of people have forgotten is that we changed the rules to allow for first reading, for testimony to be taken on first reading ordinances, which gives you the ability to provide some feedback a little bit earlier, slightly earlier in the process anyway, so maybe there's time to make amendments or reconsider some things. And so those were really big ones. And then this year, I think it's great that we are advancing the consent agenda in a format that folks like yourselves can testify on that and provide some feedback to us, because it's always bothered me that we would vote on potentially millions of dollars worth of items, but it's in a meeting that, yeah, the public can observe, but they can't participate. And so I think this is a great way to make sure that we're getting that participation, we're getting that feedback. That's really something that I'm grateful for. And this was kind of a quasi-similar to an idea that former council member Burke and myself had the last couple of years, too. So I'm just really grateful that that's advanced, and we're just creating more opportunities for public engagement, which is really important.
Any other council commentary? Yeah, I just want to, again, thank council members, I would say, the last two years in particular, we've invited council members to make suggestions for the rule changes, and we've gotten a lot of them, and we incorporated quite a few, several dozen this year. And I do totally understand the frustration that if we do something at our 3:30 briefing session that changes the agenda for the night, that's, that can be super frustrating. We, I did do two television interviews explaining it. We did, I think, post some things online, but that doesn't get to everyone, it's not perfect. So our apologies if that happened. We do worry about it, and we try to maximize public testimony. And as it turned out, because if we hadn't deferred the consent agenda on the shelter RFP today, no one would have gotten to testify about it. But because we moved it to next week, and because we are changing our rules tonight, it will be able to testify both for that RFP and future shelter RFPs. So we're trying to get better, but again, we're not perfect yet, and we really appreciate all the people that are here. So if there's no other commentary, prepare to vote. Councilmember Stratton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. We've got new rules. All right. That brings us to the next matter.
Ordinance C-36186, relating to traffic control device visibility and vegetation control along roadways, amending Chapter 12.02, Article 1, and Chapter 12.02, Article 5 of Title 12 Spokane Municipal Code.
All right. We have Inga Note from Integrated Capital Management to give us a report on this.
All right. Good evening. I also have Katie Kasanki here, too, in case there are any questions for urban forestry. So the ordinance that we're discussing tonight is a city staff request to try to clarify city code so that we are providing adequate sign visibility while at the same time allowing the city to establish a denser tree canopy per the goals that the city's been pursuing. We did have a couple of questions last time that came up, and so I just wanted to address those. There was a question about who does the tree pruning, and the answer is that homeowners can prune branches up to two inches in diameter, but a tree service is needed for anything larger than that. And sometimes urban forestry will address issues where there is something that needs to be taken care of right away, like something blocking a stop sign. And then for people who need to file a complaint about this, they do need to send it to 311, and it'll get routed to urban forestry. So just to show you what we're trying to avoid, we don't want to have stop signs hidden behind trees like this. This is an example of one where we were able to move the sign to the front of the tree and keep it in place. This is one that was fine when it was first installed, when the tree was little, but then eight years later, it had grown up to block the sign. So what we're trying to do is set up a minimum visible distance that will be used throughout the city by urban forestry, by streets, by developer services, by all the different departments that touch this issue, because right now, it's been kind of hit and miss. And our engineering staff tends to default to the most conservative numbers when there's a doubt as to what numbers to use. So what we're proposing here is a table that outlines for different levels of traffic control devices what the distance needs to be. And this is the language that goes along with it, that talks about just cleaning up how, you know, trees, or other shrubs as well, if they're blocking the sign, and in what instances we might have to remove a sign, or, I mean, a tree. Other things we're going to try to do internally to make this operate better is that staff is going to require all traffic sign locations on landscape plans. Typically, those tend to be submitted as two separate plan sheets, and then we can't tell what's going to be in the way. And then urban forestry is going to try to specify higher-headed trees in certain locations just to minimize the blocking issue. And this is just all of the touches we've done so far with council. That's all I have.
All right. Any questions for Inga? All right. We don't have any public commentary on this item. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. So my concerns are, I guess, twofold. One, that essentially, for folks that are out of compliance, we're referring to them as a nuisance. And I kind of worry about that term, because it has a very specific connotation. So that's one concern I have. But the more practical concern that I have is, we've sort of set this up in a way where if you've got a tree on your property, yes, it should be your responsibility to prune it back, but we're putting this requirement on you that you have to have a tree service come out and do it. And my constituents, most of them, many of them, cannot afford to hire an arborist to come out and do some specialty work on their yard, especially if it's just for one tree or one bush. And so without something in the code that guarantees that we're either going to change that requirement, or that the city will, in fact, in those instances, come out, if it's larger than two inches, and do the work on behalf of that homeowner who can't afford a specialty arborist, then, you know, without those sorts of changes, I just can't get there. I agree with the rest of it. We need to have the ability to see the signage. That's all really important, but it should not- all really important, but it should not fall on the homeowner to figure out how they're going to pay for this expensive yard work.
Yeah, I, I tend to share similar concerns, especially if, you know, the homeowner not only has to pay for the arborist, but also get a permit to, um, to get those trees trimmed, um, as I believe is the code. Um, again, for people in my district, we're already struggling with rent. We're already struggling with utilities to add, um, an additional cost when it comes to, uh, pruning trees, which, you know, for visibility, I totally agree with. But, um, having homeowners take on an additional cost, um, after, after the fact seems to be, um, just a bit much for me.
Do you want to address something, Katie?
Is there anything to add on that? Sure. Yeah, I can just add that, um, already by city ordinance, abutting property owners are responsible for street trees in the public right-of-way. Um, we do ask them to give us a call if they're encountering difficulties in getting the work done in a timely manner. We just have, uh, two arborists that are funded by the park fund for 87-plus park locations. So, our ability to address every single one is limited, but certainly, if someone contacts us and let us know that they're having some challenges, we can definitely help out on a case-by-case basis. And if something, if it's something especially urgent, right away, um, we'll, we can go ahead and take care of it, pull our person out of a park and, and just take care of it. Um, uh, the tree service requirement, um, homeowners may prune those small branches, um, but for safety and liability purposes, by ordinance, it does have to be city-licensed. Um, but there is no, uh, fee for that tree permit.
Well, if a version comes forward that puts that in code, that the city will take care of it, I mean, I'd, I'd support that. But without it being in the code, I just, I worry because you, as you just mentioned, they're already overworked. You can't guarantee it. And, you know, I've got a lot of very low-income constituents who, the last thing they need to worry about is how they're going to afford a tree service to come prune a tree. I just, that's just the last thing on their minds.
Yeah. And as a department, I would say that, you know, we, we certainly support, um, uh, care of city trees, or better care of city trees, or, um, some sort of assistance to be able to provide homeowners in those exact situations. So...
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Can I add one more?
Yeah.
Um, I just want to point out that we are currently following guidelines to require visibility to signs. The purpose of this ordinance is to reduce the tree removal and reduce the pruning. So, if it doesn't go forward, it's not, I mean, it's, it's still, it's still happening, I guess.
So, what you're saying is that homeowners are already required to do even more. This reduces how much they would have to do.
Correct.
This would cut back on their duties.
Yes. We are trying to reduce it so that we have more trees.
Yep.
But you're, but you're adding more rules onto the, right? I mean, the, the, the number of instances where they have to prune is, is increased through this.
No, it's less.
It's reducing it.
They're reducing it.
But we're, but we're, but you're trying to increase the distance, right, to the, to visibility?
No. No, we're reducing it actually. Right now, we use the larger distance and the engineering staff likes that because we're engineers and we like conservative things. But, um, we are trying to reduce it, reduce that distance so there is less pruning.
And then, so in your case-by-case scenario, how do you determine a person is in need of assistance?
Um, again, we just kind of field that, um, kind of just double-check to be sure they're not an absentee property owner that lives in another state that has multiple properties and that can do the work, or if it's just not getting done in a timely manner, we just, we'll just do it.
Well, I, I want to make sure we're on the same page. So, I, I'd actually make a motion to defer this one week, just so we can talk this through and make sure that we're all on the same page, and then, consider this at our next, next Monday's meeting. So, I'd, I'd make that motion.
I'd second it.
Okay. Motion is seconded. And again, just to clarify, you want, just a little more clarification that this is actually reducing the-
Correct.
-responsibilities.
Yep.
Okay.
I just don't know why you didn't ask that earlier in the day when we were briefed on it. I'm sorry.
Well, I just think that it became clear now. So, um, okay. So, the motion is to defer for one week?
One week.
All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. We'll defer for one week. We'll just get some clarity on that. All right. We've got no first reading ordinances other than related to the hearing. If you want to go ahead and read the hearing.
H-1A, hearing on vacation of the alley between Sanson Avenue and Everett Avenue from the east line of Freya Street to the west line of Sycamore Street as requested by Jeff and Stacy Boyas. B, first reading ordinance, C-36191, vacating the alley between Sanson Avenue and Everett Avenue from the east line of Freya Street to the west line of Sycamore Street. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinance.
All right. And Eldon, are you going to preview us, please?
Good evening. What we're talking about tonight is the proposed vacation of the alley between Sanson and Everett from Freya to Sycamore. The applicant would like to vacate that. Can you hear me now?
Hear me now?
Yep.
Yep.
We can double hear you.
Can double hear you.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What we're here to talk about is the vacation of an alley between Freya and Sycamore from Sanson to Everett. The applicant's requested this vacation through the non-user statute up here, which primarily means it was planted between 1890 and 1904. It was unopened for a period of five years before we went into a national, uh, city. And it was also, uh, with a period of five years, it was unincorporated before it was annexed into the city of Spokane. And those are the three criteria to meet the actual non-user statute, to be able to vacate at a no-cost vacation. Those are the criteria. So, anyway, the staff has looked at this vacation. As you can see, to the east, the alley's already been vacated. So, we've really got an isolated block in here that we're not creating a, a blockage in the middle of anything by vacating this alley. It's unopened on the east side. That's one of the criteria we look at. Also, there were no city utilities in this alley. We did have Comcast and a Vista, so we would retain an easement for both Comcast and a Vista. And we'd also require that they do a proper closure of the alley at both Sycamore and Freya Street, which primarily means you're putting a private access into the street, getting rid of any curb returns, making it look like it's a public alley. So, those are criteria we look at, and, uh, we would recommend approval of this vacation, subject to conditions. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Not seeing any questions. There's no requested public commentary. Um, so, prepare to vote on whether to approve, subject to conditions, subject to a further action after they've completed this. Councilmember Stratton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. That passes five to zero. Thank you, Eldon.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our formal legislative agenda, and that leaves us to open forum. And if you haven't participated in open forum, um, you can talk about, you have up to three minutes to talk about anything you want that's related to the city, except, as you've already heard, anything that was on tonight's agenda already, or anything that's on next week's agenda. Um, and we ask you to, um, address your comments to me as the chair of the meeting, not make any personal attacks or disparagements of people. And please no applauding or booing, or just making any disruptive sounds. We want everyone to feel a safe space and be respected for whatever their opinions are. And I'll be calling people up. And I, I had a little bit of feedback that some people signed up just in support of something one way or the other and didn't necessarily want to testify. So, if you, if I call your name and you don't want to testify, give me a wave so I'll know. Otherwise, we'll try to, try to find you. Um, and I'll call people. I'll, I'll give a two or three names in a row so that people will know to be ready. And the quicker you come down, the, uh, better, faster things will go and more people will be able to speak. So, the first person is Crystal Cheney, it looks like. And then, Samuel, I can't quite read the last name, Marks maybe? And then, Christine Bennett. So, Crystal, if you're here. Not seeing Crystal. Oh. Is she, is Crystal saying no? Okay. Sorry, Crystal, I didn't see you. Thank you. Um, and then, I think Samuel, is there Samuel here? No? Okay. Um, Christine Bennett. All right. Not seeing Christine. Becky Dickenhoof. Hi, Becky. Come on down. After Becky is, oh, I can't quite read the name, but we'll get to it.
Good evening, council president and councilmembers. I am Becky Dickerhoof, League of Women Voters of the Spokane Area Homelessness and, or Affordable Housing and Homelessness Solutions Committee. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters because back in November 16th of 2020, the chair of our Homelessness Solutions Committee spoke to this council and gave our recommendations from our league to substantially increase low-barrier 24/7 shelter bed capacity, including meals for unsheltered individuals, provide additional day centers for unsheltered individuals to go where it is warm and dry, and provide sanctioned public places with trash disposal, restrooms, and hand washing facilities where those experiencing homelessness can set up tents and park their vehicles. We noted at that time that individuals who are consistently forced to relocate without adequate alternative shelter options are repeatedly traumatized, creating an impossibility of existence where simply living and being is criminalized. Further, unsheltered individuals need places to go during the day when many of the shelters are closed. On December 15th, 2021, our league president, Anne Murphy, sent a letter to the mayor, the council and council, or president and council members. At that time, we also recommended the city take the following actions: substantially increase low-barrier 24/7 shelter bed capacity, including meals for unsheltered individuals, provide additional day centers for unsheltered individuals to go where it is safe, warm, and dry, provide sanctioned public places, safe ground facilities with trash disposal, restrooms, and hand washing facilities where those experiencing homelessness can set up tents and/or park vehicles, create and maintain a public-facing web-based dashboard which communicates real-time low-barrier shelter bed availability. It is now 2022. I wish to tell you that our league still supports these recommendations, and we hope that perhaps by the end of this year, the city council and mayor will take these recommendations to heart and follow through. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and again, I know it's, it's hard, but we're not doing applause or boos. Um, and I forgot to mention, I don't know if I forgot to put the timer. I think that was well within, but it goes, um, uh, two minutes, it'll be green, and then, it'll turn yellow with one minute left. And if you get to three minutes, it'll turn red, and then, I'll ask you to finish your last sentence. Um, the next name, I'm not sure I'm able to read it, but it looks like it's, uh, start, first name was the M, and then the last name is maybe Darasek or Daralek?
It's okay if I laugh, all right?
You can laugh. Yes.
It's Marilyn Daralek.
Marilyn. Thank you so much, Marilyn. You have up to-
It's like Daralek, but that's only if it's been a really bad week.
Okay. All right. You have up to three minutes.
I personally believe that we all do better when we all do better. And I also try to assume good intent from people and elected officials. But I came down here tonight because I was very bothered by what I perceived as a lack of transparency to rush through what had been on the agenda. Um, a huge facility that houses hundreds of people might seem like a, a great immediate fix for optics and certain stakeholders. But when you have hundreds of people with tremendous needs in one facility, that is a giant liability disaster and risk for the city and those individuals there. So, I would challenge any of us, when you do consider this amendment next week, because I don't, I'm not able to be here next week, but I challenge you to think on a personal level about what that would be like for each of you when you make your decision about, um, housing hundreds of people, some with ACEs and trauma and addiction and mental health needs. Um, and that, that's like the debacle that took place this winter at the arena. And, um, that was 500,000-plus dollars that could have been put to much better, um, effective use. Um, I hope that when you do make your considerations and decisions, that you, you take into account best-practice strategies that have worked in other cities and that are working in other cities, and that you would, um, you would really give a lot of credence to a multiple-pronged approach, which would, which would open up for other RFPs that may be submitted and considered. So, the League of Women Voters, of whom I am a member, but I'm just here as a citizen who cares about fiscal responsibility and humane, um, responsibility to, to us all, is that, um, you know, the League of Women Voters does support a shelter and transitional housing plan that has secure, low-barrier 24/7 shelter beds, including meals, warm, dry places for unsheltered to go during the day, basic human hygiene needs and trash disposal, and sanctioned tent camping and parking for vehicles and RVs. And we've got a really great operating example of that, just a little east of here. Um, I just want there to be transparency in these processes. There've been a lot of stakeholders and service providers at different tables, talking about this and talking about this and planning and strategizing. So, I'd really like to see an investment in best-practice workable solutions, maintaining all stakeholders, including those who are unsheltered at the table, so that we really and truly may all do better, because we truly are doing better for the greater good of us all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marilyn.
All right. Next, I, again, I can't, this might be crossed out, but Hash, if Hash wanted to testify?
Hey. So, I echo Becky and this other lady, Marilyn. Yes, thank you. Here's the thing. The unhoused issue is not unsolvable. It's not crazy complex. It's about humanity. It's about giving people Maslow's hierarchy of needs. They have nowhere to go. They have nowhere to use the bathroom. They don't have anywhere to dispose with their trash. They can't wash their clothes. Their basic human hygiene needs, their basic human needs are not being met. Like, we know better, let's do better. I just moved here three years ago from Seattle, and Spokane is well on its way to becoming exactly like Seattle. And what a horrific mess that is. Like, there's no reason why. I work as an addictions counselor for a zero-barrier agency, and that's zero barrier. You can be high and come in and gain all the services because you deserve it. Because you're a human being and you deserve it. Coming from a place of compassion, coming from a place of intelligence and connection, and understanding that people do need a hand out, but then, they need a hand up. And to become a viable member of their society, and to be a viable member of the city. Like, I'm a taxpayer. And the way that this city doesn't address the homeless, they're not invisible people. They're not garbage people. They're not worthless human beings. And if I was sleeping out on the street every night, I would be high too. Because you constantly have to be vigilant. There's sexual assault. There's physical assault. It's very traumatic. I would be doing the same thing. As an addictions counselor, the first thing I really push on them is trying to get them housed. Because if they can lay their head down safe at night, the chances of them getting high are far less. So, when it comes to unhoused, addiction, and mental health, the housing- So when it comes to unhoused, addiction, and mental health, the housing piece is the first and foremost piece that we have to address. So do better. Why are we not doing better? I'm out there every day doing everything I can. Like, join me. In February, when we had that cold snap, the city did nothing and people died. People died. Like, come on. Thank you.
Thank you, Hash. Next, I have Anna. I don't have a last name, but there you are, Anna. Come on up.
I have, can I tell you a little bit about me? I was severely traumatized by domestic violence. Because that, I ended up starting to do drugs and fell through the cracks of almost every place here. I have a tumor in the front of my brain. I can't even go in and get screening for it to see if it's cancerous or not, because I don't have access to be able to do it. I'm currently living in a camp that we're barely tolerated. And we try as hard as we can to keep it presentable and make it so we don't look so bad for you guys. But really, why should we have to not look bad for you when you guys failed us? I was failed miserably because my abuser is out there in the same area, and I have nowhere else to go. But on the other hand, I really want to thank the community that have come out, and they have donated things to us, like wood for fire, so we can stay warm, and food. I really, really appreciate that, but please let us get to a place where we can be safe and put our heads down on a pillow. That's all we ask for. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Next, John Artis. Is John here? Hi, John, welcome to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Salutations. As someone that's in a similar situation as the person that just came up to speak, I'd like to, A, bring it to your attention that there are people out there that are transitioning from that position. Not everyone that's in that position is like the common-day felon or danger to society. A lot of us want to progress forward. The amenities that are given to us by the city are helping way more people than, I don't know if you guys realize or not. I personally volunteer, even though I'm in said situation, and it's helping me propel forward in ways that I really couldn't do on my own. And I know that for a fact, because I tried to do it on my own, failed. There are people here in this city that deserve positions to help more people, and hopefully that can be addressed later on at another date, when it's more proper to do so. I just wanted to show some gratitude as somebody that was sleeping under an underpass that had a drug addiction a month ago. These people assisted me greatly, and I'd like to address it greatly on another time. But for now, thank you.
Thank you, John. Tracy Blum, or Bloom. Welcome to City Council.
Thank you. I'd just like to address the fact that not only do we need shelter, but we, as women, need more, like porta-potties or more bathroom facilities and things like that. And thank you for everything you guys are doing. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Tracy. Next is Caleb Lastar. Is Caleb here? All right, not seeing Caleb. Suzie Hokinson. She does need to testify. Hi, Suzie. Kim Schmidt.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak again. I'm Kim Schmidt, not from Spokane proper, from the Valley, but I work in Spokane and I pay property taxes in the county and I spend all my money here. So, once again, getting ready this morning, I'm thinking, what do I want to say at the city council meeting? Well, you know, not knowing that, you know, that RFP was going to be moved to next week, I think this still is applicable. You know, I have stood up here numerous times and said, everybody deserves a roof over their head. It's a basic human right. And I started to think, you know, in national media lately, Spokane gets some coverage for having a lot of religious extremists, for having a home, a house crisis, which only exacerbates our homeless problem, and also for our police officers murdering a lot of people. Right? That's what we're known for in national news media. And I thought, well, wouldn't it be a great thing if we actually did something good that made the national media? Because I actually know of two more stories that are coming out pretty soon that aren't going to be favorable. So, you know, I had this crazy idea, what if we did have one of those tiny home communities? Or a pallet home community? Something that puts a roof over people's head who needs a roof over their head? It's as simple as that. It doesn't have to be fancy. And I know with you guys that you've done a lot of work to make sure that we get our houseless people in a shelter. I know that you have. But what if we did something even crazier to maybe, I don't know, inspire the other city leadership and did something like, oh, I don't know, a bake sale? So we could get a photo op, packaging a cupcake to hand out to people to put on our Instagram, but instead use that money and take it and buy clothes and shoes and bus passes and laundry passes and all those things that our houseless community needs to actually move forward? Because it seems like we're in campaign season already, and that's all that some people care about, the photo op. And it's getting real old. And I was talking to a friend just this week who was crying because she has to seek medical care. She's a houseless individual. She is worried about losing her camper that is broken down at her friend's house right now, and she has to seek medical care. She's so happy she has meals, something to fill her stomach, a roof over her head right now, but she is so scared that she is going to lose that camper. And there's nothing she could do about it right now because she is in a situation where she needs medical treatment. And it's as simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. All right, Teresa Simon. Welcome back to City Hall, Teresa.
Thank you. The first thing I would like to talk about is, as a city person of Spokane, that Ozzy Kenezovich and I participated in putting things into people's Facebook pages, and he helped. And I filed an Internal Affairs investigation, because I've gotten nowhere with it. And I think Ryan Holyoak's family has a right to know. And I think that the creatures have a right to know, and I think Doug Orr has a right to know. And I'll be accountable. They shut down the Internal Affairs Investigation with 200 pages or so in less than one day. That paperwork is available to anybody and everybody who wants to see it. You can judge for yourself whether or not they properly investigated it. When Ozzy goes after Chamberlain, who I'm not a fan of, I think he needs to tell the truth of what's going on. He represents our city too. There. Now I feel much better. Okay, so I want to talk about the homeless. I took them water this summer. They've been locked out of the bathroom. And those people are people like David Blisland that got up here and spoke. I ran 450 files at the courthouse on landlords evicting tenants from homes that didn't even own the home. The landlord didn't own the home, and these people are trying to find rentals. But they have evictions that were illegal evictions, and I took it to the courthouse. They now request proof of who the homeowner is. But the people who are on the streets that are homeless, Carolyn Lee was evicted nine times by Harwood, Joe Harwood, nine times. Why would a landlord evict one person nine times? I think we need to build a homeless camp. I think they're pretty cool. They actually have Airbnb's in homeless camps. I don't know if you know that, but I thought that was pretty interesting. They're fining people to use the porta-potties $538, people that are citizens of Spokane and telling them to go tell their homeless friends not to use the bathrooms at night. Well, if you have a colonoscopy bag and it's full, whether you're homeless or you're a citizen, it's reasonable to use a porta-potty. We need to change what we're doing. I have three homeless houses. That's people who are no longer homeless, that came from homelessness, and it's working. You don't know where they're at, maybe you do. But I have three.
Teresa.
And they don't have police calls.
Thank, your time's up. Thanks so much for coming down tonight. Ron Simon.
City Council, City President, I'm not used to doing this, but, what the heck? I, once again, like everybody else, my focus is on the homeless, and actually, my focus is on what's to come. Like a little stream starting at the top of the mountain, and then when the water gets down, you have a raging river. A lot of people out there are less than six months away from being out on the street. One day, they show up and there's a tag on their door that, you know, that they're being evicted. They still go to work, their car breaks down, all of a sudden, they're living in their car. The next thing, they're living in a tent. I was out at the center when it was eight degrees. I was out there Christmas Eve. We can do better. I know we can. I don't, you know, I mean, you know, if everybody just chipped in 10 bucks, the problem would be solved. I hate to say it, but that's it, you know? Everybody spends more on coffee than they do on the homeless. And the other thing, I was kind of wondering, I thought I heard something the other day about they wanted to use the US Pavilion for their dog, for a dog run, for, you know, dog replacement, is that right? They were talking about...
They're building a dog park in Riverfront Park somewhere, at some point.
So we think more of the dogs than we do of our homeless? That's sad, and I'll leave it at that, okay?
Thanks for coming down. Next, Barry Barfield. Welcome to City Council, Barry.
Thank you, Council President. I'm currently on the leadership team in the Spokane Homeless Coalition, and I'm also the Chair of the City of Spokane's Community Housing and Human Services Board. It's a volunteer board. I have three small suggestions. First one, every year, the City of Spokane's Community Housing and Human Services Department employees bring in about $20 million in state and federal funds to address homelessness and our larger housing shortage crisis. It's a very important department. Over the last two years, that department has seen a mass exodus of experienced employees, a loss of millions of dollars of funding because of the loss of employees, and an inability to hire new employees because of the significant challenges in dealing with homelessness and housing issues. It's not easy to work in that department. My suggestion is, and partly why I'm just here, to make that public and invite anyone listening to apply for one of those civil service positions. If we can get those chairs filled in that department, we can get more money to build houses and to support the homeless. My second suggestion is for the Spokane County residents who might be listening. There are three open positions on the Community Housing and Human Services Board. It's a citizens advisory board, which I'm the Chair, and it advises you folks and the mayor. But our charge is to address homelessness and housing on a regional issue. So it's not just limited to City of Spokane residents. So I also make this plea, if you are a city or county Spokane resident, and you'd like to have your voice heard for housing and homelessness, there's a city board that will welcome you. Please apply for one of those positions. As you mentioned early in the beginning, just go on the city website and they'll find it. My third suggestion stems from an article that Sean Vestal wrote six months ago in the Spokesman Review. It was titled, "Caught in Political Stalemate, The Homeless Crisis Worsens." In the article, Sean quotes, "When Council President Brian Biggs is asked why there are so many more people on the street right now, he points to the simple math. He says, 'Where are they supposed to go when we don't have shelters for them? What we need is,'" this is quoting you, "'what we need is an overall comprehensive plan, and that's what we don't have now. I wish I could say we'll have one soon.'"
All right. Your time's up for tonight, but come back next week. Thanks.
I'm good. I mean, you got the idea.
All right. Next, I believe it's Robert Moody. Welcome to City Council, Robert.
Thank you. My name's Robert Moody. I don't know really how to say this, but...
You speak into the mic just a little more, people want to hear you.
Everybody that is homeless comes from a different walk of life. Me, my wife, my dad, my dad's dog, and my three-year-old son, all lived in a 93 Ford Ranger in Denver, Colorado for six months with nowhere to go. If it weren't for my mother-in-law, I'd still be homeless with my three-year-old son. But I've came back here so we could have stability, something that I've never had. I've been on my own since I was 14 years old. I came back here and I seen what Jules Helping Hands have done down there on Freya with Tent City, as many people call it, but us down there call it Camp Hope, because there's hope for all of us. My dad's down there. I go down there every day, I volunteer, security, whatever they need down there. I take my truck around, I pick up all the trash. Everybody down there comes from a different walk of life. They either got mental issues, drug addiction, hell, I'm a drug addict myself. But I don't let that interfere with what needs to be done. And like I said, six months in Denver, Colorado, broke me as a man. I used to make fun of those homeless people, thinking they were doing it because they had to. Now, some people don't have a choice. I didn't have a choice but to be homeless. I had nowhere to go, I didn't know anybody. My wife didn't know anybody. And for my son to have to sleep in the back of a Ford Ranger for six months, and I couldn't go to work because I wasn't going to have him sitting in the car while I was at work in a parking lot, so instead, I did what I could. I flew a sign, something that I never thought I would do. But Spokane's homelessness and the way the city comes about it, something really needs to be done. But throwing everybody in a shelter, it's not the best idea in the world, because a single shelter for that many people, it's like putting that many people in a prison cell together. There's going to be conflict and everything else. Everybody down there at Camp Hope, yeah, they may come from different walks of life, but every one of them get along. They've all came together and helped each other out in one way or another. My dad, somebody comes in, don't have a tent, they go talk to my dad, my dad figures it out, he'll go find them a tent. Donations come in, everything. The sad thing is, is the city don't realize, is each one of you guys could end up homeless at any point in time too. And if that were to happen, what would you do? Who would you turn to? I don't know who I'd turn to. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Julie Garcia.
Sorry, I'm kind of noisy.
It's all right. Welcome back to City Hall.
Hi, welcome, thank you for having me. Members of City Council and Council President Beggs. Tonight, we are brought here in absolute support of people experiencing homelessness and the need to bring new models to our community toolbox to intervene and provide low-barrier points of entry to individuals experiencing homelessness in our community. Wouldn't it be nice to go into the winter, not wondering where they're going to go, but actually how we're going to help them end homelessness? To all of you City Council members that sit before us, you have the collective power to make an unprecedented change and be the good stewards to the constituents you serve. As council members... To all of you City Council members that sit before us, you have the collective power to make an unprecedented change and be the good stewards to the constituents you serve. As council members, you are the ones that conduct policy that infiltrates our current community atmosphere as well as lays a foundation to shape the future atmosphere of the city and those who reside in it. As a community, we have nowhere else to hide, dismiss, or turn a blind eye to the fact that the homeless crisis is at its breaking point. We frankly don't have enough doors for individuals to enter into services. This is now the time to think creatively and out of the box. Spokane could be, however is not, a forerunner in understanding the complexities and circumstances surrounding those experiencing homelessness. Also Spokane, leadership is lacking the understanding of holistic and collective collaborative models where individuals can access services low barrier. This is your time to lean in to your collective discomfort and leave a progressive and proactive blueprint to change the landscape of homelessness in our community. Low barrier means that the requirement to entry into services is minimal and alleviates obstacles that would hinder someone experiencing homelessness access. Low barrier is working together on strategies to engage and provide wraparound services for those who live outside. Low barrier equals building a foundation of trust without punishment, focusing on an individual's strength, and finding an individual interventions as well as their basic needs. We need to bring agencies together that do the frontline work. One could say the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. As a city, this continues to occur time and time again. We are not moving the needle on homelessness. As we see from data collected in the point in time count and those respective numbers, our homeless numbers have increased drastically. As a city, we are not providing anything new or no intervention strategies. We need providers to come together and find common ground and strive to do better to serve our folks experiencing homelessness. As elected officials sitting before us, the voters, your constituents, have put faith in you to do the right thing. This is an opportunity for you all to lean in and listen to the community and its members. Your voters have trusted you, now trust us. Lastly, this should speak to all of us who represent people experiencing homelessness and those of us that serve them. A quote from David Levithian, "It would be easy to say that I feel invisible. Instead, I feel painfully visible and entirely ignored." Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Welcome, Jim. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Council President Beggs, council members, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Jim Bertramson, and I volunteered to serve with several of our nonprofits serving the houselessness in Spokane over the last several years, including Jules Helping Hands. Years ago, I went on a hunt to South Texas. I was assigned a bunkhouse with seven other hunters, several of which I hadn't met before. The snoring was loud and never ended. Sometime in the wee hours of that morning, I finally fell asleep, just in time for the 5:30 wake-up call. Thankfully, the hunt only lasted for two days and two nights. The good news was, I got a bit more used to the snoring by the second night. Looking back, though, I'm thankful that it was only snoring. No one was crying, no one was sick, no one was talking to themselves or talking to someone who wasn't there, and there were no pets sleeping with us. It occurs to me that everyone needs their space, their place to call their own, where they can get away to sometimes, have a little peace and quiet and escape from the world. It happens when you go to visit your siblings or your grandkids. There's a point in time when it's time to find your own space and catch your breath. Many of our houseless friends might try this escape in their car or RV, but many only have a tent, and it may be in Camp Hope with 300 of their closest friends and very little real space to call their own. We need a variety of solutions to be able to respond appropriately to the many different situations and circumstances our Spokane houseless friends find themselves in. A large group warehouse may work for some, particularly when the only choice is to be outside in adverse weather conditions. I believe, however, that we need to step up our game and find other alternatives that will allow our houseless friends to reintegrate into a community setting. We now have some issues that won't allow them, we know we have some people that their issues won't allow them to work well in a large group setting. Many have experienced traumas that dictate their living options. I've heard over and over again in conversations with our Spokane houseless, a common theme. Somewhere in each conversation is the statement, "I never imagined I'd be here." And you know, almost every one of us has someone in their family or their circle of friends that is just maybe a paycheck away from finding themselves in a pretty desperate situation. I'm asking that the City Council try a new and different approach. We desperately need a safe parking lot. We need to try the pallet shelter idea that's now being used up and down the West Coast successfully. If you're not comfortable to committing fully, let us at least try a partial approach. Start with a safe parking lot, start with 50, 80, 100 shelters. Let us show you what we can do.
Thank you, Jim. Next is, looks like Brianna Gorder. Welcome, Brianna.
Hello. Hello. I don't know.
You're good.
All right. Well, thank you for letting us all speak on behalf of the homeless community. It's great to be here. It's very bright. I just wanted to start off in saying that in September of 2021, I lost a friend to homelessness. His name was Doug. Doug, like so many others, died on the streets waiting for what most would call a basic human right, which was a home. Approximately 162 Spokane County residents passed away in 2021 while experiencing homelessness and waiting for stable housing. I have a vision for a community where people can receive wraparound services to meet their very individual needs. And today I call on city leaders to join us in our fight to end homelessness by funding and supporting a variety of creative solutions. Some may question the success of these programs. I stand before you today as one of those success stories. In 2019, I was connected to Jules after years of chronic homelessness. And as of 2020, I have been consistently housed and employed, serving those with similar experiences, the healing factor being re-establishing a sense of community. Homelessness is a complex issue without a one-size-fits-all solution. We all service providers have acknowledged the complexities of this issue and unified to create a solution to meet the needs of all. I'm here in support of not only for Jules Helping Hands, but the mayor's plan to end homelessness by opening a shelter. Homelessness should not be a life sentence. And I would like for all of you to look out in the crowd tonight and look at the folks from Camp Hope and remember those faces, because the decisions you make in the future affect all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Brianna. Welcome, Catherine.
Hi, thank you.
Up to three minutes.
Brian, my name is Catherine Corrick, and I'm a city resident and community volunteer. I have worked in the field of mental health and substance abuse disorder treatment for more than 20 years, nearly 25. When I had a break in employment a couple of years ago, I decided to look for kind of another opportunity to be of service. And homelessness was something that occurred to me because I lived at Brown's addition for 15 years, and the increase in homelessness evident in that community was evident to everyone that lived there. And I could see walking down First Avenue, all the folks out on the streets, sitting on the sidewalk, and I just wondered how to make a difference. I actually thought that I knew what might help. And I thought that mental illness and drug addiction, now called substance abuse disorders, were major causes of homelessness. And I was surprised to find out, as I educated myself, that those are, they didn't even make the top three, okay, according to the mayor's national survey in 2020. But they do complicate homelessness, and they are increased by homelessness. They make it hard to exit homelessness. So one of the things that I have noticed in working with different individuals in shelters and on individual assignments from providers relative to my skills, is that folks experiencing homelessness suffer from a loss of community. And community is what will help them, more than anything, exit homelessness. So what I'm suggesting to you is that now we look at a both-and approach to sheltering homeless individuals rather than an either-or solution. So let's expand what we do, wrap services around the individual needs of the people involved, and think outside the box. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Next person, I can't read the name, but the email address looks like it's M.L. Is that ringing a bell for someone? I don't know. Yeah, it looks like their email might be M.C. or M.L. C.O.S.I.S.O., gmail.com, anyone? All right. If you don't get called on and you signed up, come tell us about it, but I'll move on to a word I can, a name I can see clearly, it's Daniel Mayer from Revive. Is Daniel here? Okay. I'll wait, I'll come back. Dreah, are you still here? And after Dreah is going to be Tom Robinson, and then Ally Grounds. Welcome back, Dreah.
Awesome. Thank you. So this is for the open forum, correct?
Yep.
So I'm part Spokane tribe and Coeur d'Alene descendant. And I just have to be honest, you know, when I come here and I sit through these meetings and I hear you guys talk about zones and about what you want to do with the land, and it's just really bothersome, and I feel my ancestors and my blood boil from the inside. And like, I just wonder if you guys take any consideration of, from the tribal members, and remember whose land you are on. You're on, you know, Spokane Native American land, and these, this area right here is really sacred to the Spokane tribal people. This is our fishing grounds. This is where we would fish and we would meet with other tribes and people from around the area, and we would do our trading. So this land is really sacred, and I just hope that when you're making decisions that you might include tribal members. And also, when you guys are considering these new homes that are being put up and these apartments and stuff, that you make sure that you're putting a little percent, make sure that there's a certain percentage of indigenous people going into these low-income housings. There's a lot of indigenous people that are out there on the streets. And also, when you're doing these homeless places, to also think about the people that are going to be running it, to maybe include indigenous people, because a lot of times indigenous homeless people, they don't feel comfortable going into your, you know, those establishments. So making sure that it is a fit place for the Spokane indigenous people. I think that is about it. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. And Dreah, before you go, just to let you know, next week, so in April now, we have a tradition of asking someone from the Spokane tribe to come give us a report. So Chair Evans from the Spokane tribe is going to come next week and give us a report on salmon restoration. And we've also invited, coincidentally enough, the Coeur d'Alene tribe to give us a report on what they're doing on that, too, next week. So I hope you'll be here next week and see that.
Beautiful. I will be here, yes.
Yep. Thanks. Tom Robinson. Good to see you again, Tom. You have up to three minutes.
Good to be here. First, I'd like to do a quick nomenclature thing. I started advocating for tiny huts in 2015 in Spokane. I'm a resident of Spokane. I don't know if you need to hear that each, from each person. And we actually built a couple of huts and hid them on private property for homeless persons. The reason we did that was, we got together with Karen Stratton, and she put us in touch with code enforcement person who was the most, she said, was the most knowledgeable person there. And that person said, "You've got a lot of problems if you want to put a couple of huts or a few huts on, say, a nonprofit organization parking lot, like a church parking lot. You've got a whole bunch of ordinances that are going to prevent you from doing that." So then I started reading all these ordinances. And this is what the council members need to also be well-versed in, because if you pass some sort of ordinance and then the city administration says, "Wait a minute, we've got five ordinances that you didn't set up to jump through the hoops through to do what you want to do, so we're not going to give the approval for this homeless," whether it's tiny huts or whatever it is, "we're not going to give approval." For example, the fire marshal has to come out and verify that it meets requirements. A notice has to be given to all the residents in the nearby area that it is going in. There's about three more ordinances about camping that talk about only existing for 90 days. And these ordinances are going to trip you up in dealing with the city administration so that they will give you the approvals that you want to do what you want to do. So I urge you to get together with someone knowledgeable who knows all about those ordinances and can fill you in on which ones that you need to modify in order to do what you want to do. So thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Tom. And is Daniel back? Daniel Mayer?
Marty.
Marty, I'm sorry. I misread it. Welcome, Daniel. You have up to three minutes.
So I came down here to support the thing that we're not supposed to talk about. So I'm going to do my best to, like, talk about the thing without talking about the thing. So I work for Revive Counseling Spokane as the foundational community supports, community outreach and intake coordinator, and we deal, not deal, we get to help people that are experiencing homelessness, right? And one of, it's, I don't even know how to say what I'm trying to say, really. Like, we help people transition from that phase and support them to do whatever it looks like through their eyes, right? We're super low barrier. Spokane's got a bunch of broken systems, right? And we need to do some things differently. And it's hard to help people get engaged in services and get their needs met when they're scared that the place that they stay is going to be thrown in a dumpster, right? So we have, like, oh, people could access these services, but like, when your basic needs aren't met, and you got to worry about where you're going to sleep at night, being thrown away, like, how are you supposed to go do any of those appointments or do that stuff, right? So like, I don't know, shelter care is cool, but if we have this big hub where there's a bunch of us meeting and doing our thing down there, then we could help more people get up out of homelessness. And like, we are frontline case management, foot to concrete, like, we go out there, but there's only so many of us, and it's hard. And when you can't find your people out there, it's hard to help them do anything when you can't find where they're at because they had to go somewhere else. So like, I don't know, I was down here to support that thing, kind of lost for words because that's not what I'm allowed to talk about, but I can talk about it, right? My boss is also here with me, and she had to get her daughter a nap before she came down, so, and I forgot to put her name on the list. Could I ever come down here and talk a little bit, too? Lain Baby from Revive?
Well, we have, we know Lain well. We'll. We'll get her next week. But if we, if, if we change the signup thing, then we got to do it anytime. So it's not, no, no offense to Lane. She's great. Thanks, Daniel. Ally, is it Grounds? She's gone? Okay. Helen Klemm?
Hello. Sorry, I'm a little excited. I've spoken here once before, like, three, four years back. I was pregnant with my youngest child, Raymond Wayne. And I was experiencing, oh, I've been experiencing homelessness for 10 years. It's a bit challenging when you're on your own and shit. Shiz. Sorry. I wrote a whole awesome speech thingy, Speech of Doom. Yay. But I don't really think, y'all already know all this shit. Shiz. All I got to say is, if I were in a shelter instead of at the tent city, I wouldn't be able to, like, stop the face red because I could feel it's hot and red, and I'm just freaking out on the inside. I wouldn't be able to stop that, and I'd probably end up fainting half the time. I'm not very good with people. Y'all scare the shit out of me. I'm more afraid of you guys than I ever be of any of these people out here. Any of them. I know these people. I, I live by their side and I watch them. They're not violent, they are not angry. Yes, they hurt, but they are just pit bulls. And a pit bull is a creature that you love and has been taught to love or taught to And I'm personally tired of watching everybody hurt each other. In the tent city, we stand together, we clean up our messes, we keep each other warm, we set fires for the rest of us so that when we're out of our tents or our spots, we don't have to worry about shit. Shiz. Sorry. Really grew up with a sailor. Anyway, I mean, I'm not saying nay to the whole shelter thing, I'm just saying awkward little things like me, shelter, bad idea. Trust me, I can barely even walk into this building.
Thanks, Helen. Anwar Peace.
Good evening. My name is Anwar Peace. I'm a Spokane resident. Tomorrow marks my 22nd year as a police accountability activist. My activism didn't start after my brutal arrest in the late 90s by two off-duty Seattle police officers, in which those officers pulled clumps of my Afro out of my head. No, my activism started a couple years later. On, on April 12th, 2000, I watched Seattle police officer kill David John Walker. Local TV news broke into the coverage to show the slow-speed police foot chase of Mr. Walker's mental health crisis that afternoon, in which we saw the 40-year-old Mr. Walker skipping down the street like a little kid, daring and begging police to kill him. And then on live TV, we watched an officer shoot him once through the heart. When I saw this on TV in front of me, for me, I had a PTSD flashback of my own beating that I took from those off-duty officers. I spent two and a half hours curled up in a fetal position, crying with snot bubbles and all. After that, I stood up proudly, wiped the tears from my eyes, and then began my 22, 22-year journey to become a now-police accountability expert. My police accountability activism has always been focused on and centered around helping those and supporting those impacted families that have been touched by police violence or police abuse. And so I've worked very closely with those impacted families, like Mr. Walker's family, Michael Randall Ely's family, John T. Williams's family, Jesse Surray's family, David Novak's family, Ethan Murray's family, Peterson Camo's family. All of those impacted families for years have been demanding and deserving some kind of true police reform. Locally, we have done nothing on police reform, and it shows. The police union has stymied the ombudsman's review of the George Floyd protests. The city's police reform roundtable has been very unfruitful due to the, due to it being intentionally stalled countless times. And it's been 657 days since this city council proposed their 24-point public safety reform agenda resolution yet to be voted on. Many of the items, the city's agenda resolution, haven't been resolved by Olympia, and it's those items, those very items that should be immediately brought forward for a council vote now. Like the reform agenda where it states, "Whereas Black Lives Matter and must matter to all of us if we're going to realize the promises of freedom and liberty for all people in our community." And the following agenda items, 1 through 6, 9 through 17, 20 through 21, those items can be voted on right now. These reform agenda items must be passed now. If not now, when? No more blank checks for the Spokane Police Department from the, from the city council until true reform and accountability takes place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anwar. Brian Royer? Are you here, Brian? All right. Not seeing Brian. All right. I think we have two people appearing virtually. First, Hallie Burchanel.
Hi.
Oh, sorry. Hallie, come on. There's actually a note that says, "No, she isn't in person now," so my, my bad. Come on down.
First, I want to thank council for their time. I came down here for the thing we're not supposed to talk about, but I think that what I have to share is pertinent regardless. I want to look at this first from the perspective of my own personal life experience. So I experienced homelessness for two years as a teenager during 1985 and 1986, a year in Spokane and a year in Seattle. And through that experience, I'm really deciding to be transparent. I was physically assaulted, I was sexually assaulted during those two years. And through amazing good fortune, I was homeless during a time when heroin was just hitting the streets and I didn't need it. Had I met it, I know that I would have been lost, that would have given me escape from everything that I was feeling. I also know that statistics say, if you have a high ACEs score, adverse childhood experiences, that you are destined for a life of challenges, and, and it is hard to succeed. I'm grateful to be standing here, what is it, 88, 98, 2000? I can't even do math anymore. Okay. Many years later, I'm grateful to be standing here as the executive director and founder, or one of the founders of Compassionate Addiction Treatment. And I, I'm not supposed to be able to be standing here today. And what brought me here is that I have community. I have connection. I have people that believe in me, and I have people that have, have fostered a sense of belonging and strength in me over the years. I want to refer to, so the work we do at Compassionate Addiction Treatment, we call it CAT for short, is based on tip 55 from SAMSA, which is a government agency. And tip 55 is behavioral health services for people experiencing homelessness. It's one of the few evidence-based manuals you're going to find for providing services to people experiencing homelessness. And I think it's of dire need that our city be educating themselves on best practices. We can throw a dart blindly and have it land wherever, but if we come from the direction of, of knowledge and of what has worked and does work, we can begin to make a very impactful difference. One of the things that CAT is based, we like to use is a quote from Johann Hari, and that's "The opposite of addiction is not sobriety. The opposite of addiction is connection." And I would challenge you that that is true for people experiencing homelessness as well. When you are working with someone who has challenged mental health, untreated mental health, which is the fourth reason for experiencing homelessness, and untreated substance use disorders, which is the fifth reason for experiencing homelessness, to expect this person to walk into a large environment with 100-plus other individuals and to not panic, to not run out the doors?
We're past your, you're right in the middle of some good stuff, but we're past your time.
I'm sorry.
But come back next week and talk about what you want to talk about.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Now we have, I think, one person online, Dave Ziering.
Yes, sir. We getting through?
Yes. Dave, welcome to city council. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, Council President Biggs. You helped me from some work that I've done. I really apologize that I haven't been able to come in and meet with people in person, but I have health issues that prevent that. I just want to say that while people are pondering where available funds should be spent on these, what appear right now to be two different thoughts on how it should be spent, that it's really important to realize that there are about six different categories of people in this awful homeless condition. And they, they, a lot of them don't play well together. You've heard several people talk about the fact that being put into a large facility just wouldn't work for them. On the other hand, a large facility is probably the only way that a dead-of-the-winder cold environment can be accommodated. I would encourage everybody to look at what all of the categories of homelessness are and see to it that all of them are being accommodated in their most successful way. I've got a great deal of respect for Julie Garcia. She has, on one hand, expressed that a camp to take care of the most difficult members of the homeless society shouldn't involve more than 50 people. And on the other hand, there are proposals for facilities for 250 people. I think those differences need to be sorted out a little bit more carefully rather than just leaping at what appear to be immediately available solutions. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dave. That brings us to the end of the people who signed up. And before we go and close it out, I just wanted to thank everybody again for coming down and for all those people who shared their stories of their experiences in a place that many of you said was not a comfortable place to come or to be. And so I really, I don't know how hard you had to work to actually get here, physically to get here, and then mentally to come through the door and share with us. But I tell people all the time that it's stories of real-life experience that move us more than you ever know. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the good work that we've heard of people are doing. There's much more to do. And as Barry mentioned, my personal belief is we have to figure out how to get on the same page and start seeing what we have in common and not what drives us apart. So please, hold your vision, keep up the good work, take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of someone else. We're adjourned.